Okay, good evening, everybody. Se go ani buju endio wachea kwekwe. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call this council meeting to order. First, Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will move to the approval of the addits. We have two delegations and we have two additional time-sensitive motions. And I have a motion to accept the addits moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Ossanik. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? I'm not seeing any hands, so we will continue on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have two delegations. First, Jeanette Larue, resident, will appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to the quiet street implementation. Just a reminder to our delegations that you have five minutes. Jeanette Larue, you have the floor.
Hi, Jeanette, I'll just need you to unmute your microphone, please.
Okay, can you... okay. Okay, um, thank you so much for having me back. I was, I gave a delegation about a month ago on the concept of quiet streets, how they're being rolled out in other cities and how there are great fast response to people's immediate needs in coping through the pandemic. I really appreciated all of your questions and the discussion that came about really helped to further refine this idea, hone in on what was happening elsewhere. And most importantly, it sparked a larger conversation within informal networks of people and groups who see the potential value of this idea. Next slide. And I guess actually the next slide, sorry, after that. So it's, it's been a really exciting month. This idea has culminated into a specific motion being put forward today. And I just want to say I'm genuinely appreciative of the way that KCAT has taken this up and how city staff has been open to piloting this idea and this working arrangement. And of course, the way that councillors Dory and Kylie have championed this in a practical sense. And then to all of you for considering the merits of this motion today. Next slide. So I just want to speak to the qualities of this motion that I think are smart for several reasons. It's, it's a workable motion. It's based on local context and resources. It's achievable. It's really exciting to see how community engagement can add capacity. And then obviously, the argument is strong. The logic is there for why quiet streets make sense in the pandemic in Kingston. And lastly, it's just the beauty of a pilot in that it's flexible. It can be refined and expanded as it's just a first testable step to see what makes sense into the future. Next slide. So last time I presented, I shared these two databases. And what's really interesting is that in sort of becoming more familiar with this issue and reading more, it's, it's sort of become clear to me that the bigger cities have really been better poised to quickly implement more robust plans than earlier on. So what I can gather, there's some budgetary and capacity challenges that make it difficult for smaller cities like Kingston to do the same to the same extent. And so for me, that's what's really exciting about this motion is that Kingston could be an important example for other cities and how a community-based approach can be very productive during these times, which just underscores the value of engagement during normal times. So the way that KCAT has worked with city staff over the years, how it's shown leadership, developed a strong reputation within the city. It all makes this motion practical, very specific to Kingston. So really, it's the working and good faith part between KCAT and the city that's special and notable. And so I just wanted to share, come back and share that as a citizen, I'm really pleased how this has taken off. And I'm, I'm personally looking forward to working with KCAT on building quiet streets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from delegation? Councillor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. Ms. Larue, I'm going to ask a question that I asked you last time, which is, in your research and looking at other Canadian cities that have done something similar to this or actually essentially the same thing, are there any lessons that have been learned that we should be thinking of as we consider passing this motion?
Um, yeah, thank you for that question. I, I definitely think that there are lots of lessons learned about how to do the work. And especially in this, with respect to this motion, I don't know the intricacies of the working arrangements for other cities. And, and I think I mentioned last time that I think that that will become more apparent as time goes on, like what the arrangements are. But as far as I know, this is the first, like, formal arrangement as a, as a, as an example with the community.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Strout?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Jeanette, for your dedicated work in this regard. So this, I've got questions about something that's in the motion. You may or may not be familiar with it. I need to ask you if you know anything about it. So clause six gives delegated authority to staff to send veto or suspend the program, the pilot. Exactly what it says is, "The transportation services department be granted delegated authority to suspend, limit, or expand this program as safety reviews or resources permit through 2020." Do you know about that clause?
Sure, I'm sure Roger Healy, who's, who's going to be doing a delegation after me, be able to speak to this early, but further, but just quickly, I, I think it sort of speaks to the pilot-ness of this motion. So, you know, that's sort of the beauty of it where the, the final say is still held within the city. So essentially, it means that it can be dialed, the work can be dialed back or dialed up depending on how things go. So it's, I think that that clause specifically speaks to who's holding the reins, so to speak. But I can let Roger sort of answer that if he, if he thinks it's different.
Okay, thank you. And the, the seventh clause, you may or may not know the rationale behind it, but suspension of the pilot in November to allow for winter maintenance. I'm assuming that is a recommendation from the staff that provide winter maintenance?
I'm assuming so. There's, you know, that, I think that that just means that, you know, given the, the conditions of winter, that, you know, they're not, that the plows aren't going to be stuck, you know, working around, you know, temporary installation. So I think it's the cleanup clause. But, you know, obviously, there's, there's literature to suggest how designs can be made to support this type of infrastructure into the winter, particularly coming out of Montreal, as we know, would, would be the city that would most likely have to deal with that to the most extent, given their snowfall. But, but yeah, that's the, I would call that like the cleanup, the cleanup part of it.
Is there any discussion on that?
Councillor Strout, I'm sorry to interject, but it is a limited two questions per councillor in a delegation. So I'm sorry, I'll have to, I'll have to move on, but there is another delegation that is on tap as well on this topic. So the next, next on my list would be councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you, I have one question for the delegation. Thanks so much for the presentation. I already have one street that wants to put its name forward to be considered a quiet street. So I just wondered if this passes tonight, what is the process? Do councillors submit the street, like, to staff or to KCAT? Or do, does somebody from the street, you know, like, a resident, a representative resident, did they submit it? Like, what would be the next step if this passes tonight?
So I guess the process, to sort of avoid the conundrum of why my street or why not my street, it's a really thoughtful sort of whole view design of what streets would be designated this way, like a prioritization scheme. So it's essentially that KCAT would do the research and then come up with specific streets that would be submitted to the city for consideration, including like a comprehensive, not just what streets, but a comprehensive set of design suggestions and logistical details, et cetera. And again, I can let Roger speak to that, but that would be the flow of recommendations. And then obviously, as I said, with the pilot, like with this being a pilot, if there's, you know, obviously, if there's, as I anticipate, there would be like popular, well-received, strong demand for more. There's always room for that in the motion. But I think starting out with it as a pilot in mind is key.
All right, thank you.
Okay. See if there are other questions. Very much. So now we'll move on to our next delegation. We will invite Roger Healy to appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to quiet street implementation. Mr. Healy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and greetings to council. Thank you for listening to this. I wanted to, first of all, mention that there are two other members of KCAT on the line prepared to answer some questions. And so I'm speaking, so they're in the background there, listening to what goes on. So we're, the title is creating safe spaces for active mobility. And I'll just give you a little bit of background. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of background of what KCAT, who KCAT is and what we've been doing. I think many of you are familiar with us, but just to, just to make sure everyone's aware, we were started as a community coalition in 2008. And that was made up of city staff and, and health unit, public health unit staff and members from Queens and members from the public. And that started in, as I said, in 2008. We've, our, our aim was to promote active transportation in Kingston and, and to be an advocate on policy, infrastructure programming. And we'd been very active, including we, the first thing we started was an Active Living Charter. That was in 2009. We were quite involved in the Williamsville Main Street Study. That was in 2012, 2013. The Kingston Transportation Master Plan was, was a big thing in 2015. Waterfront Master Plan, the Age Friendly Advisory Committee. And then last but not least, the Active Transportation Master Plan, which was in 2017, 2018. And then the Active Transportation Implementation Plan, which was started in 2019. So, so we've been active throughout that as participants in the studies. And what I've got listed next is the Princess Street Promenade. And that was something that we, we were certainly helpful to get it started. And it's turned out to be a very successful thing. Finally, the Eastern, we were all set to host the Eastern Ontario Active Transportation Summit. And it was canceled. It was supposed to be held in early June. So, so there we go. But KCAT, so KCAT has been quite involved. Thank, thanks Derek. Next slide, please. What, so the big question is why, why quiet streets? The, the notion of, I think we all, when we initially got into the, the stage of lockdown, everyone noticed that, that we had to get out of our house to, to get some exercise. And it was quite frankly, a bit of a problem. The one thing that's been very clear through work in this area is that we, as humans, we need to be active. And so public health authorities have been recommending neighborhood walks as something that has to be done in this, in this time. We, we need, so we, we noticed the need for adequate space on our streets. And we've also noticed a lot of novice and young cyclists and walkers and scooters and everything. And they need protection on our, on our streets. And of course, the last thing is we've noted that there's been a limited capacity for Kingston Transit to, to provide access to essential services and jobs. Okay, next slide, please. So what is being proposed is that we focus initially on, on central Kingston to align the new street modifications to the downtown core. So it's very important that we have a link to the downtown core of street redesigns. And, and but throughout, we will, we will hope to designate corridor routes that connect neighborhoods to key destinations, while still allowing for proper physical two-meter physical distancing. And these things will look like, there, there'll be temporary barricades and signs to encourage slow and local traffic. And I have a photo of an example.
And you have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. And we mainly just want to be able to alert motorists that they're entering a shared space. So next slide, please. So we've, we've set up an executive team and we will, the question was, we will have consultation with stakeholder groups, neighborhood associations. Then we will select some candidate streets. They will be reviewed by staff. And then we will engage in consultation with the, with the staff, with the neighborhoods. And that's, that's pretty much the, the plan. And I'll leave you with just two final photos. And I know they're worth a thousand words, but it's...
We'll put the photos up and, and then we'll move to, to questions. That's great. Okay, thank you. If I can just, if I can just see the full screen. Oh, that's great, thank you. Just so I can see, are there any questions for the delegation? Yes, councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, Roger, for your presentation. Wait a minute, sorry, is that good there? Sorry. I, you know, I'm, I'm good with this and I think it's probably a good thing. And I know, I know that we have a lot of biking out here in the rural area as well, considerable amount of biking. And I was wondering, first question is, is there a rural component to your plan and considerations? And also, I think it is also important to consider that bikes, bikers, bicyclists are not always quiet, for one, and they're also not always slow. So I wonder if you could address that because I have two communities in the rural area that have experienced concerns about that. Bikers are going very fast in quiet areas and they're very loud. And so they have a lot, a real social thing going. And I'm not against that. I just think that is something to consider as well in, in, in this situation. And have you ever experienced that? Thank you.
Mr. Healy?
Okay. First part, do we have a rural component? I think there, there, we're counting on a major arterial being, the KMP Trail and, and, and other, other access from the, the outlying areas of Kingston boundary. So, so that's, that's certainly being considered. I don't think, I don't think there's any issues with which streets are, are brought forward. But as, as Willie Sutton said when he was asked, why does he rob banks? He robs banks because he said, he said that's where the money is. I think, I think we have to look at the density of the population too that will be served by, by quiet streets. And, and they, they will certainly justify the, the effort to, to make a quiet street. And, and the quiet street getting to your, your fast and loud comments and questions. I've certainly experienced fast and, and, and that's, that's always an issue when you've got a mixture of abilities and so on in an area. But part of the reason we're asking for this space is to allow for a little bit of selectivity on the part of mobility devices and, and people cycling and walking so that they can, they have more room to share the space. As far as being loud, well, I really can't control that. And I don't know, I don't have any magic answers to that.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have two questions for Mr. Healy. One is with regard to timing. So we know that it's already mid-June and these fixtures will have to be gone by November. And so do we have any ideal timing that like we would want this pilot to start up in August or start up by Labor Day? Is there any timing that you have in mind?
Yeah, well, we, we would certainly like to get going as soon as possible. We're, we've got things scheduled to go tomorrow if, if council agrees to this motion. And we, we, we think we can get moving with a few very sort of no-brainer-type streets that are pretty much ready to go. We could deal with them very quickly, maybe hopefully by first of July. We're not talking about extensive modifications to the streets. In fact, if you just saw on the, one of the last pictures of the slide, it's mainly just a barricade at the beginning of the street, a barricade at the end of the street saying, please slow down. And then all the intersecting streets have a similar barricade, maybe not as big. So it's, it's pretty simple in concept and it's pretty simple in, in, in execution and installing and, and tearing it down at the end. We will ask city staff to review these things and, and everything will be according to their, their guidelines, of course. But the other thing is there, the Kingston Transportation Implementation Plan, the first phase of the master plan, is already establishing very good corridors that we would like to sort of build on and maybe do this in advance. So, so I, I hope that answers your question, your earlier question from Jeanette Larue about how we would go about, I think, I think I tried to get it on that one slide there where we would, we would first consult with the neighborhoods, including of course, the councillor and, and, and ask for suggestions. But, but it would come forward from them. And, and if they don't want any quiet streets, that's fine. You know, we, and, and the number that we will actually be prepared to do will be based on the number of resources, the amount of resources we have and the number of volunteers and so on that we have. So, so that's, that's the answer to that question.
Great. And then that leads into my second question, which was, in this last slide you showed, you had that one bullet about neighborhood associations. And there's some districts, like in the West End or even in countryside, that might not have a neighborhood association. So wouldn't exclude an area from participating just because they do not have a neighborhood association? Is that right? Or is this just a downtown pilot?
No, no, certainly that, that's correct, that the councillor or, or anyone else can, can bring forward a suggestion. Sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is councillor Neil.
Thank you. Hello, Roger. I know you and I have spoken in the past about, about bike boulevards. And I know that there's some very good protocols that have been established in a lot of university college towns for bike boulevards. Would you say that, that, that quiet streets is a kind of adaptation of that whole idea of bike boulevards?
Yes, very much so. They're, they're called bike boulevards, greenways, neighborhood greenways, that kind of thing. So there, there's a variety of names and terms for them. But that's, that's essentially what a quiet street would be. There would be no changes in, in parking restrictions, no changes at all. They're very similar. You would, you would be very similar to what you've seen many times as an area of construction where, where an area is defined as local traffic only. And that's, that's basically a quiet street without the construction. So I just wanted to just ask if, if some of my colleagues here on the phone, Dr. Patricia Collins and Bruce Percy, if they have anything to add to that?
Yeah, Patricia Collins, thank you very much. Roger, I think I just add that I think bike boulevards are certainly very similar to quiet streets. But quiet streets are kind of a step beyond because of the attempt to exclude non-local traffic explicitly, whereas bike boulevards don't necessarily do that. I think bike boulevards are really about just alerting drivers to the fact that there may be more cyclists on that street than your typical street. Whereas a quiet street is a very deliberate attempt to create space for cyclists and reduce the amount of through traffic.
Bike, bike boulevards do indeed have the expectation of slower traffic and that moves traffic to a different, to different streets. So, um, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hey, thank you. Next is councillor Strout.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Roger. I have a question. You or Professor Combs can answer this. Actually, I have a couple of questions. So there's the question I was going to ask Jeanette, which was about the winter situation. So many places that have traffic restrictions for this reason. For example, the Annex in Toronto, which has had this quiet streets type of thing and the public would call it that. But the local traffic only types of restrictions, they're permanent and they go through the winter. They acknowledge the fact that active transportation users are year-round. Many, especially in Toronto, don't have cars for a variety of reasons. I'm in that category. So I'm well aware of the fact that my cycling doesn't end in November. And it's kind of that seventh clause, as is, I would normally ask for it to be separated so I can vote against it, because this is a mistake. I was going to give you guys a chance to pitch for why we would have a two-tiered system for quiet streets, one for the warmer months and one for the colder months. And it's clear that there are people that cycle year-round.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a crack at that. I, I'm like you. I, I think I, I cycle all year round. I, there are certainly blizzards and things that, that get me on a bus and so on from time to time. But I think there's a growing number of people who are, are out. And, and again, we're targeting not just cyclists, but, but there's a lot of people who, who use, use these quiet streets or would use them through the winter. I think the, the winter maintenance thing has to do with removing bollards that are, that are screwed into the pavement and would interfere with plowing. But I, again, I think as part of the, the Active Transportation Master Plan, it was envisaged that, that when certain winter corridors would be established. And, and there's a recognition, of course, of the increased maintenance to, to make sure there's snow cleared and so on. But you, you may recall, well, every winter seems to be slightly different now. And we had a lot of snow in early November. And I think that, you know, once that hit, everyone kind of shut down. you know, once that hit, everyone kind of shut down and put their bicycles away, expecting it to be like that all winter. And it, and it turned out to be a fairly minor winter for snow, snowfall. So I, I was, you know, and, and so, so it can be, it can be variable. I think, like I said, we, we have to establish corridors, main corridors that connect neighborhoods that will be used year-round, no doubt. But, but for this purpose, we want to, we want to think in terms of mid-November to close it down mainly for bollard removal. Bruce or, or Patricia want to add to anything there? Okay. I, I, I think that's the main answer. Okay. You have another question?
Yes, thanks, Roger. You know, that's, that's what you said is fine for acknowledging that conundrum. And my second question has more to do with what I was saying about these longstanding measures for local traffic restrictions in, in the Annex in Toronto, which is the first place I noticed it because I was a student at University of Toronto. This was back in the 90s. So it's not a new concept. How does this quiet streets with temporary barricades differ from that more permanent model that we see in the Annex in Toronto? And I know things have evolved since then. Have, is that, or have, have, has that competition moved away from that type of model of the local traffic restrictions, you know, one-way streets that meet up head-on in the middle of a block and, and is impassable through traffic, making it impossible to use as a commuter route, that kind of thing? Is this, is that a completely different set of restrictions from quiet streets? And if so, why is that not part of this white streets pilot?
Okay, I, I think I know what you mean, where certain streets are, are say interrupted so that cars can't, just physically can't get through them. And that, that's more, I think, what Patricia Collins was talking about. The, the slight difference is that bicycle boulevards really try to restrict cars completely. I think the quiet streets are being introduced mainly because, well, it's really to give people a taste of what it would be like to have more permanent street barricades that would, would deflect traffic more. So, so it's, it's really, I think, an ideal time to introduce virtually the same ideas as a bicycle boulevard, but, but will, while still making allowances for cars to, to continue to move through there, especially local traffic deliveries, taxi pickups, that kind of thing probably should continue because we don't want to disrupt residents that much. But the, the notion that it's really just one step further to close off a street and, and make it less, less desirable or impossible for cars to use and therefore more attractive for, for cyclists and pedestrians. And that would allow individual neighborhoods to identify those streets after they've seen them with a quiet street model.
Okay. Can I just add to Roger's point? Thank you. Um, I, I think that there's certainly no shortage of opportunities in Kingston to create those kinds of permanent installations that would quiet traffic on, on local residential streets and enable more active transportation. And certainly KCAT would be in favor of any of that kind of work. But I think that we also have to recognize that what's being proposed in this motion is really a response to the pandemic and trying to find ways to enable people to safely engage in active transportation, particularly those who may be more new to that kind of activity and that type of physical activity in their communities. And, and therefore maybe a little nervous about being on the, on the right of way. And so, so that's what this motion is about. And I think what KCAT is mindful of is the priorities that have already been identified in the Active Transportation Implementation Plan and really not wanting to detract from those priorities and, and, you know, the work that, that needs to be done to achieve, to achieve that plan. So, so I think that's also sort of behind the, the rationale for the November 13th end date, you know, that this is still ultimately a COVID-19 response and, and that's the spirit of this motion. So hopefully that helps to clarify. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you. Seeing no other questions then. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And now we will move, move on. So next in our agenda, so we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay. Next, we do have a motion of condolence. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Bone. That's the sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of retired volunteer fire captain Dale Hodgson's, who passed away on June 9th, 2020 after a courageous battle with amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease. Dale spent his career helping people. In addition to being a volunteer firefighter, he was a paramedic for more than 40 years. Our thoughts are with Dale's family and friends during this difficult. So we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Okay, we have no deferred motions. And so now we will move to reports. First up, we have report number 48 from the CIO.
Moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor McLaren. The report number 48 from the Chief Administrative Officer Consent be received and adopted.
There are four clauses. Would anyone like any of those clauses separated? Councillor Kylie? If you could just indicate which.
Clause one, please.
Clause one. Okay. Any other separations? Yes, councillor Neil? Just need to unmute.
Thank you. I just did. Um, I don't have, I'm looking at a very small screen. The one about the East End Services Contracting Act, I think it might be.
That's number four.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so we've separated number one and number four. So if there are no other separations, we'll first deal with the clauses that have not been separated. So clause two and three. Clause two, Boy Scouts land lease, 642 Mackdenell Street. And clause three, encroachment agreement, three Drummond Street. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to clause one, contract amendment Terranet Incorporated. Councillor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, I'm wondering about the company Terranet and where it's based out of and where it hosted servers with all the residential data that it rightfully uses to help planning staff. So if you could talk a bit about the company and where that information is stored.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. Terranet is based out of Toronto. They're a Canadian company. They're actually owned wholly by Omers. And all of their data is hosted in Canada, actually at their Toronto head office.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. I can support this.
Okay, so we, yes, councillor Chappelle.
As you, your worship, Terranet provides information to impact as well, do they not, with regards to helping build voters' lists?
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you. And through you, Terranet provides information. They actually, we get information from impact and Terranet. I can't speak to what specific information is transferred between impact and Terranet, other than that there is likely a fair amount of sharing of property information, ownership information.
And supplemental to that, how frequently is the information updated and provided to the city?
And through you, your worship, I don't have that information. How often? It may be a live connection, but I can get that information for you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on clause one. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Okay, clause four, award of contract, winter maintenance roads, sidewalks and bus stops. Councillor Neil?
Thank you very much. Just a very quick question. Hopefully it's a quick answer. This is a continuation of an existing contract, isn't it? Isn't it? This isn't displacing any city work, city workers. This is a contract that's existed for some time. Is that accurate?
Through you, your worship, yes. This has been contracted services since prior to amalgamation, which was 1990.
Thank you.
Here, worship and through you, just, just a quick question to staff. In, in reading the report, it kind of listed the expenses for services as a whole. Is there a totalization of yearly services, the total cost that it would be yearly? Because I know that this contract runs greater than one year if it passes. And how does that compare to the previous value that we've gotten on this contract?
Through you, your worship. We didn't provide a total because it's based on the actual number of events. So the way the contract has been designed in, in previous years as well, that the contractor only activates at the call of city management. And so it depends on the number of winter events we have, the nature of the winter events for the duration of them, whether it's a snowstorm versus just de-icing in advance of, of ice storm forecasts. So that is why we didn't provide that information. We have broken it into hourly rates and we do estimate, and for budget purposes, approximately 27 or 28 events per year. So our budget for this contract is about $1.6 million a year.
Okay, and, and just a supplementary question to that. So essentially, if I'm understanding you correctly, we, we only still pay for the services that are actually provided based on how the contract is structured.
Precisely.
Thank you.
Okay, next on my list is councillor Chappelle.
Yes, through your chair. With respect to prioritizing areas for snowplow removal on bus routes and sidewalks, will, will councillors have an opportunity to discuss the planning and routing? Only because I have some neighborhoods that are primarily seniors next year and I'd like to know if there will be an opportunity at a later date to discuss that.
Through you, your worship. Last year, staff presented an updated winter maintenance policy. And that policy is based on the guidelines that are established through the minimum maintenance standards. So that is the whole basis of the policy. It's not, and it establishes based on classes of roads and, and it is not our intent to bring that policy forward. Again, it was just presented last fall.
Will there be an opportunity to offer some amendments based on the nature of residents in certain areas?
Councillor Chappelle, I, I don't dispute that this is an important issue, but the, the item that's before us is an award of contract for snowplowing in the East End. So I think that what you're addressing is more on the, the winter maintenance policy. So staff, but obviously if, if you want to bring a motion to revisit it, I think that would be something that would be separate from this item. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, then I will call the vote on clause four. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, thank you. Now on to report number 49 from the CIO.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Bone. The report number 49 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, so the first clause, approval of the administrative plan, City of Kingston Heritage Fund, 2020 to 2021, and the appointment of councillors to participate in the City of Kingston Heritage Fund jury review process in 2020. So we'll see in the recommendation that we are looking for a councillor to serve for the review committee for project grants and then a, also a council representative to participate in the review committee for operating grants. Can I have a volunteer or two for both, both committees? Councillor Neil, thank you. Did you have a preference about which, which review committee you'd like to sit on?
A slight preference for project grants. But I, I can do either.
Thank you. Can I have a, a second volunteer, please? Councillor Kylie? So councillor Neil has expressed a slight preference for project grants. Are you okay for, to do the operating grants?
That's fine.
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, just noting councillor Neil and councillor Kylie's participation in those two review committees, we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause two, renewal of the service level agreement between the City of Kingston, the Kingston Theatre Alliance, including support for modified version of the 2020 Kick and Push Festival. All those in favor? Well, I'm sorry, councillor Kylie, did you have a question?
Yeah, really quickly, Mayor Patterson, through you, I was just wondering, the report mentioned the previous employment numbers. Twenty-seven people were hired when it was an in-person festival. I'm wondering if staff could comment on whether a similar volume of people will be hired, even though it's modified because of the pandemic?
I guess. Commissioner Hugaboss?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. I did have Director Wigginton on here, but I don't quite see him right now, but that's okay. Thank you for the question, councillor Kylie. Don't anticipate maybe the entire same amount of, of employment opportunities with this year with the pandemic, but the Kingston Theatre Alliance has expressed there will be hirings for summer students and, and definitely their staff and other opportunities. So it might not make the same amount of, of previous years. But definitely a lot of hours and opportunities for people to be employed on the, through this work.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Chappelle.
Yes, through your chair. The funding that was approved in the 2020 operating budget was $50,000. Given the modifications based on the fact that there's not as many, not be an in-person version of this, why are we retaining the same costing? And is there not an opportunity to reduce the funding?
So I could see, I did see Mr. Wigginton's hand as well. I was wondering if the Commissioner Hugaboss or Mr. Wigginton want to answer that?
Your worship, I am here, calling Wigginton. So through you, I'm happy to answer that question. In reality, last year in 2019, we had in our cultural services budget $65,000 to support the Kingston Theatre Alliance and the Kick and Push Festival. This year, we actually budgeted $64,500 and chose to reduce the funding that we are proposing to contribute to $50,000, partially in recognition of the changed circumstances, but also in response to the growing capacity of the Kingston Theatre Alliance to acquire funding through other sources, which they've been able to do. They've been able to confirm funding already through bodies like the Great Waterway, Canadian Heritage and other sources. And we're also hoping that there may be some limited in-person opportunities this summer. The call for proposals for this year's festival just closed yesterday. There was 81 submissions, so a strong interest from across the country, from artists to participate in this year's festival. And the challenge to them is to provide a robust program that combines in-person with online and other alternative opportunities. So we do have a chance this year to attract both local, regional and national attention to this festival as one of the few offerings that may be available to audiences this summer.
Thank you for the comprehensive answer.
Okay, so with that, we will call the vote on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to report number 50 from Planning Committee.
Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Kylie. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Kylie, that report number fifty from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment 2754 Creekford Road. We will call vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Next, we have report number fifty one from the nominations advisory committee.
By councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor Doherty, that report fifty one from the nominations advisory committee be received and adopted.
So again, just the one clause, public appointments to Taxi Commission and Planning Advisory Working Group, that Rod Moffat be appointed to the Taxi Commission for a term ending November 30th, 2020, that Christopher Redsey be appointed to the Planning Advisory Working Group for the term of council ending November 14th, 2022. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have nothing from Committee of the Whole. Information reports, if you have any questions, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of April 2020. Number two, third crossing quarterly update Q2 2020. That's for Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, just one question to staff. Great to see that we're still right on budget. When, if someone was to ask us today, when is the expected completion of the third crossing? Is it the summer of 2022? Is that still what we're looking at? Or is it a bit delayed now because of COVID?
Mr. Huguenbos.
Thank you, your worship and through you. The expected completion date right now is is still fall to to late 2022. The the construction is progressing well, but but yeah, still want to be realistic with 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 fall to to late 2022 at this stage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, number three, information report on the provincial consultation on Ontario's Building Code Service Delivery and Bill 184. Councillor Hutchison.
Check what's down here. Can you hear me? Yep, okay. So, um, here on page two of nine of the report, it indicates that the city was given the opportunity to talk about enforcing visit building regulations, which are absent from the legislation, and that they concern high-risk work, public education on good construction practices and public safety during construction. But it indicates that it's only a guideline and rather than a regulation is not enforceable under law. So I'm just wondering if this mean, does this mean that construction safety features identified in coroner's reports are still not covered by enforceable law?
Who who would like to answer that? Mr. McClellan.
Through you, your worship. Jenna Morley of my office, my colleague, is on this call, as I understand. And she worked on this report. I don't personally myself have the answer to that question, but I'm just seeing if she does.
Thank you and through you. Thank you and through you, your worship. I don't have the answer to that particular question at this time, but I can find out the answer.
Well, that would be good. I'm just interested in how this fails to or does affect the public safety and the safety of workers on the job. I have a second question, and that is to staff, will council, we know that Bill 184 covers a lot of ground, not just the building code. So will council receive a report on the social housing provisions and implications of Bill 184?
I'm just, I'm just looking to see who from staff. Yes, Mr. Eggen.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So related to that piece, councillor Hutchison, I will have to look into it and get back to you. Related to Bill 184 specifically, but also through your worship. I also wanted to recognize that our chief building official, Lisa Kepner-Hunt, has joined the meeting for this evening. So if she could be recognized to be able to provide some additional information because she's been working most closely related to these proposed legislative changes.
Okay, this is only my, this is my last question, the one I just asked. So I'll just indicate that it's it's important, as indicated by our MPP Ian Arthur in the paper today, that the bill actually accelerates evictions and weakens protections for tenants and also indicates that municipalities are no longer required to provide a set number of social housing units. So I just think it's important. So if you could get back to me about that, I'd appreciate it. If Ms. Kepner-Hunt can answer the first question, that would be useful.
And is there anything that you wanted to to add in response to any of councillor Hutchison's questions?
That's for you, Mayor Patterson. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. So the the first question, councillor Hutchinson, the the public education and good construction practices that we were speaking to in the first page of the report was with regards to safety during construction. There's nothing currently in the Building Code Act that requires a site to be safe during construction. And at at the time when that guideline came out is when we had the the large fire downtown Kingston. So the guideline came out, we are hoping for regulation to be put in place to ensure life safety provisions were were regulated into the code as the construction went up, rather than once the completed building was, once the building was completed.
Okay, good. So we can take it that staff is through the large, large city mayor's organization have tried to get this province to include this sort of protections, but it haven't got anywhere as of yet. Is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no other questions at this point, we'll continue on. We have no information reports from members of council. We have no miscellaneous business, so we will move on to new motions. We have four new motions on deck. For the first new motion, I'm going to hand the chair over to Deputy Mayor Hill. And Deputy Mayor Hill, it really is up to you, but I I certainly would suggest it would be okay if you just wanted to read through the resolve clauses rather than the page and a half of where is clause preceding it, but I'll leave that decision up to you. Thank you.
I will certainly take your advice, your worship, on that. So whereas it has been determined that this additional delegation of authority to the chief administrative officer, oh, my, my, yes, is no longer required as the City of Kingston is implementing stage two of the provincial reopening plan. Therefore, be it resolved that a bylaw be presented to council and given three readings at the same meeting in order to amend bylaw number 2016 189 as amended, being a bylaw to consolidate the delegation of power and duty by deleting Schedule B in its entirety, as the additional delegation of authority is no longer required to support council or its committees to meet the challenges posed by the current COVID-19 epidemic. And any exercise of power or authority by the chief administrative officer pursuant to Schedule B of the bylaw 2016 189 as amended from March 24th, 2020 to June 16th, 2020, be and is hereby confirmed confirmed to continue to be valid until such time as waived, reduced, deferred or otherwise amended or revoked by resolution of council and that all other delegations of authority provided to the chief administrative officer from council and all authority to administer the affairs of the corporation of the City of Kingston granted to the chief administrative officer, including but not limited to those provided by section 229 of the municipal act shall continue. See bylaw number two, 2020 dash 094 attached to the agenda as scheduled page 165. Your worship.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So just to be clear, the the purpose of this motion is to to rescind the delegated authority to CAO hurdle and to staff that council extended back on March the 24th. Now, just just to make sure that there isn't any confusion around the council table on this, there were, there were actually two things that happened back in that that third, third week of March. So on March the 24th, council passed a motion to extend this delegated authority, giving additional powers to to staff to respond to COVID. And then on March the 26th, two days later, I declared a state of emergency municipally here in in the City of Kingston. So just to be clear, these two things are are different. So the the state of emergency gives powers to to staff and some to to myself to be able to respond quickly as needed to to guard the the health and safety of community members. So there are are pieces under that, for example, changes to operations of of transit or changes to operations of shelters, all to do with, for example, preserving physical and social distancing. All of that is directly related to guarding the the health and safety of of the public. That's under the state of emergency provisions. And to be clear, those remain in place. I've had some discussions with other heads of council in the region, and we are all of the mind that that state of emergency provision should remain in place, certainly as long as the provincial state of emergency is in place as well. The second piece, though, related to delegated authority, was giving staff the power to respond quickly, not not on measures directly related to the health and safety of of the public, but more to be able to respond to to measures that are, who basically came from, for example, the the shutdown of the economy or some of the social and economic effects that came from either the pandemic or from from the lockdown. So for example, waiving fees for patio licenses or being able to to change fees for for parking or some of those pieces that are not directly related to the public and say, public health and safety, but are certainly connected to some of what our community has gone through. So I just want to take a moment to to thank and acknowledge city staff for their work on this over the last three months. I think that CAO hurdle and the entire corporate management team have and and our city staff as a whole have done a fantastic job responding remarkably quickly on a whole range of fronts, particularly in the crisis phase that I think we all saw unfold, certainly in in the months of March and April. So I I want to recognize that this motion that is in front of us is not a reflection that somehow that that work hasn't hasn't been done at an exceptionally high level. It's more a recognition that I feel that as a community, we've moved from the crisis phase now to more of an adapting phase where we're now looking to to live with COVID. And obviously, there are a number of different effects and implications that we're going to have to manage and deal with as that result. But I feel that now with perhaps less of, out of the crisis phase where the time pressure isn't as great, I feel that there are some important and perhaps some difficult decisions that have to be made. And I feel that it's right for council to make those decisions. I don't think it's fair that staff now would make those decisions. It's one thing when time is of the essence and we need to make those decisions quickly, but I think now it's possible for council to be able to to address those decisions and there will be more decisions to come. So that essentially is the motivation, that is the purpose behind this motion. I have spoken with with CAO hurdle and her team about this. So it was not a a surprise. But that essentially is the intent of why I've put this forward. So certainly happy to to hear any other comments or questions around the table on this motion. Thank you.
I have some questions. Councillor Neil?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Like the rest of council, when the delegated authority motion first came forward, I at the very beginning of these trying times, I like everybody else, supported it. And I don't regret that support. I do appreciate the motion tonight, though, because we, as a body, are the elected officials to represent constituents. And there wasn't, and I appreciate that there had to be decisions made in a kind of nimble, quick way during the crisis. But sometimes the community didn't hear about it before it happened. Sometimes we didn't hear about it before it happened. And so I appreciate that that we'll go back to having the transparency and the open governance around bylaws and decisions being made that is part of the culture of of Kingston City Council. So so I appreciate that. And I'm sure that you'll be recognized that in your deliberations and decisions that will be made because the emergency, indeed, despite the great work that KFLNA have done and and we are in the province, we're recognized as as being very, very successful in our fight against the pandemic. But I'm looking forward to us having an opportunity to weigh in and and discuss issues around bylaws and 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 that. And it'll be nice to get back to being able to find a focus on our council priorities as well. And I know that 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 will be tempered by the fact that we're living through a crisis, but it it would be nice to be able to return to some of those objectives that we've set for ourselves. So but I totally support the motion before us. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All straight, councillor Stroud.
Yes, I do have a question. I need to get it through my mind. The mayor gave a couple of examples of things because it is confusing between the emergency declaration and the delegated authority motion. The, in my mind, the the one, the instance of a of a major decision that was made that has a great impact to my residents and that was done with no consultation with my residents and still hasn't, has yet to occur, because it 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 isn't set to take place until next week. But that decision will get, as far as I understand it, if it's in the category of the delegated authority, which I think it is, but that will be my question. That is basically set in stone by the second clause, which says all the decisions that were made by the CAO. As you see the second clause there between March 24th and June 16th. So the one I'm talking about is the is the partial closure of some downtown right-of-way's in consultation with the DBIA. So that decision, while it may be a good thing, was not done with any public consultation. And that is undemocratic. And that is one of the things that we really have a moral obligation to consult more widely with the citizens before we do that, because it's not just my residents. Every resident in Kingston is affected by what we do to the downtown. So I was just going to confirm, is that one of the things we're setting in stone with clause two? And if so, then I have a problem with clause two.
I will need some help unless Mayor Patterson, you're going to respond to that question.
I think Deputy Mayor, it might be best to get a response from from staff on that one to make sure that we
I don't see the hands in front of me, so I'm just assuming responding.
CAO hurdle has put up her name.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So my understanding is that decisions that have been made prior to June 16th under delegate authority would still apply unless council as a whole was to provide a different direction.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Stroud.
Yeah, so yes, confirms what I've, what I understood is that Yeah. So, yes, confirms what I what I understood is that that downtown street closure announcement that the mayor announced, but that it was as from work of delegated authority by the C A O in consultation with the D B I A, but nobody else is problematic and remains so to this day, and seeing as it has not yet been implemented, perhaps we can amend the second clause to exclude that particular decision so that we can open it for debate and public consultation. That would be my my hope that we would do that. If we don't do that, we will be, when we vote on this, the second clause will essentially mean that we are condoning the undemocratic decision. And I certainly don't condone it, and so I would be forced to vote against the second clause, even though I am in favor of the general taking away the the temporary delegated authority. That's the main intent of the motion in favor of that.
So, thank you, Councilor. Is that that? Are you making that motion then, or are you asking for that motion to be made?
I I guess I guess I'll have to ask for a five-minute recess so I can write up an amendment that would exclude that particular decision for the reasons already mentioned.
I'm assuming you will you email that to the clerk then? Is that your plan?
Yeah, I can do that. I just need five minutes.
All right. We will take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor Kylie, Counselor Neil. Counselor Kylie?
My point of order was that I recognize another point of order. I didn't know if you saw Mr. Chair, so Counselor was the one.
I'm sorry then, Counselor Neil.
Thank you. My point of order regards the powers that the province gave to mayors under the Emergency Act, the Emergency Declaration. So is it within our powers to take away that? So I know I'm a procedural wonk, and I'm asking a procedurally wonky question, but is it indeed within our powers to declare the mayor no longer has emergency powers under the provincial legislation?
So I think I have to, because Mayor Patterson indicated a point of order. So before we can get a response, we have to go to the point of order from Mayor Patterson.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just on, just as a point of order, so without necessarily addressing the the previous questions. I I leave, just hearing from the clerk, that it's not necessary to amend this motion if council wishes to revisit a decision that has already been taken. It would be in order, I believe, for a council motion to come forward along the lines of what C A O hurdle has said, if council wanted to provide a different direction. So I, that's my understanding, but perhaps Deputy Mayor, if we're inclined, perhaps we could just get a confirmation from the clerk on that.
True, Deputy Mayor, you're correct. The motion as it stands can be passed, and what the if you put this in the last clause, the counselor can bring a motion forward at the next meeting, and that will basically be there to undo the decision that was previously made by the C A O. So pass the recommendation tonight, come back with motion.
And that wouldn't be reconsideration?
No.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Stroud?
This is my question, and it's the clerk's opinion that it's not necessary, and that's very reassuring. However, it it's as a separate motion, it does not require reconsideration. I assume it's because of the wording of the third clause of the, here, let me get back to the original. Until such time is waived, reduced, deferred, or otherwise amended, or revoked by resolution of council. So I take it that the clerk is referring to that line, and and that's why reconsideration is not needed, because the council motion is this one. And it it includes wording about revoking any part of the of the of the decisions that were made if council gets to it. So so that's, is that right, Mr. Clerk? The the last part of clause two leaves the door open for essentially revisiting any part of the delegated authority decisions, even if we pass this clause?
You, Deputy Mayor, Counselor Stroud, you're correct.
Okay, so then I will take the clerk's advice and submit a motion for our next meeting. However, the, I believe the go-live date of those closures is June twenty second. I suppose that doesn't really mean that we can't revisit the decision. Maybe then we'll have a little bit more of live field testing info by then. So it's it's so it's six of one, half dozen of the other, but the timing is noteworthy that today's the sixteenth, and our next meeting is in July, I believe it's July seventh. So that's three weeks away, and and we will, these people will actually have taken effect by by our next meeting, so. Is that correct?
There's a point of order, so Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My point of order is simply because you cannot see the hands raised. I would just note that C A O hurdle has her hand raised at the moment.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor, I I would suggest if if council wishes to not proceed with this particular initiative, I would suggest that the direction be given as soon as possible, because the timing is to be installing these, the Jersey barriers, et cetera, in late June. So by the time we get to the next council meeting, those will already be in place. So if the desire is not to proceed and and essentially leave things as they are, then I would suggest that probably the best thing to do would be to provide direction as soon as possible.
So if that were the case, how would how would that happen? Is there a process for that? I I don't know what the process for that would be.
Um, well, I, through you, Deputy Mayor, I'm assuming the clerk can jump in here from a procedure, a procedural perspective as well, but there could be an amendment, I I assume, put in, put forward tonight that would provide that direction.
Yes, through Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is correct. Should note that we do have a special meeting of council next week, and one of the things that we could do is add a motion, should we receive it for consideration at that meeting as well.
Counselor Stroud?
So, given what the clerk told us about the framework and what the C A O has just said about the practical implications of the decision, the clock is essentially already ticking, the the changes are going into place in a week. And a public consultation that did not occur is going to take longer than that. So on the one hand, that explains why the decision was made with consultation of only one body, because it was expedient. But on the other hand, it doesn't get around the concerns, that these aren't just my concerns, by the way, this is many residents have mentioned this too, and and people at hospitals as well. So 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 we don't have time to do the consultation that was not done and still have a closure that would be helpful for the downtown businesses. So we're kind of in a bind. We we do have, we, this
Excuse me, Counselor Stroud, the point of order, Mayor Patterson?
So thank you, Deputy Mayor, just perhaps to to jump in on this point. I think what we're hearing from staff is that if there's a change of direction, it needs to happen right away. If council strategy is forward, but not necessarily with this motion. So hold on, so I'm I'm just I'm just offering the suggestion, which is that we could pass this motion, and then we could take a five-minute recess. If council wishes to put forward a motion, then we could deal with it, we could deal with it tonight. I offer that just simply as a suggestion.
Yeah, I was just, I was gonna make a point of order to that point of order. I don't believe that was a point of order, Mr. Vice Chair. That was simply another perspective on the issue that I brought up. And if I did make an amendment, we'd all have a chance to speak to it. The question is whether it makes sense to even do that at this late hour with the go-live date a week away. I think what I'd like to do is I'd like things to be different the next time around. I'd like for public consultation to not be ignored in this way for something so important. And I might just leave it as a comment that this decision, which impacts so many people, could have been handled even under the delegated authority with more consultation than than it did. That was a personal decision by those involved in the decision to exclude all of council and to exclude all the citizens of Kingston other than the D B I A and the business owners of the D B I A. That is not public consultation. It's inconsistent with open government. It's inconsistent with everything we talked about in the last five years. And it's lamentable. That being said, that the clock is ticking. Rather than throw the baby out with the bathwater and start from scratch with a five-minute recess, I think I'm going to just leave it at that. I've made my point. Do not appreciate what happened, nor does any democratic citizen of the city. And maybe we can learn from this, and the next time something of this nature comes along, more effort can be made to try to get some, you know, take a couple of weeks to gather input the way that we do on every other file. And I'll just leave it at that. I won't take any action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Strauss. So we're returning to the original motion. Are there any other questions? Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor, you need to unmute yourself.
You are correct, Deputy Mayor. So, um, just to be clear, under this motion, the mayor retains his power. Does the mayor retain his powers under the declaration, the local declaration of emergency? Is the mayor nodding? Not quite sure. What is the efficacy of that? Why would we canceling the delegated authority to C A O? Why would we not cancel both? Special powers to the mayor.
So would that question go to the mayor?
Well, either that or legal. If the mayor can respond, like, you know, give me a position.
Patterson, can you respond to that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I can respond, and then I would certainly be if if Mr. McLeod wanted to, or someone from staff wanted to jump in as well. So to be clear, I think that the reason why we would keep the state of emergency in place is because it still allows for decisions to be made that relate to the public health and safety in our community. And I think that we can all agree that the pandemic is not over. We are simply having to adapt to it. So, for example, if we think about the bylaws that we passed at this council meeting that were under the umbrella of a state of emergency, for example, to to impose certain fines if people weren't taking social distancing seriously. So that would be an example of something, a a power that we could have if, as we reopen, that that becomes an issue that we could respond to. And there's many other operational issues, again, related to COVID, where I think that having that ability to be able to respond quickly, again, because transmission rates can can spike early and quickly, being able to respond quickly if, for example, we got direction from K F L N A Public Health that we had it to move to 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 address a risk in our community. So that that's what I would say would be the rationale for keeping the state of emergency in place, but I'm happy if staff want to jump in with anything else. And I'll just note that Deputy Mayor, that Commissioner Joyce has his hand raised.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So just to be clear, under the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act, once we declare a state of emergency, then the, there is an implicit implicit legal obligation associated with that, and that is for the head of council or their delegate to protect property and the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the emergency area. So that is inherent under that act whenever we declare a state of emergency as we are in right now. So and and I think it's been fairly clear recently that the state of emergency, there's a desire to keep the in the state of emergency as long as the provincial emergency is in an effect, and certainly I would share comments that the state of emergency in Ontario will continue still for some time. And it's probably best for us to stay in concert with the other municipalities that are in our public health region as well in that regard.
Yeah, okay, I I think that's a reasonable argument. I just have one clarification. It all has to do with democratic governance and what we should and shouldn't do ourselves. The issue of, I I'm not sure the argument about the the argument Mr. Joyce gave was good, and part of what the mayor said is good, but the argument about the fines seems to me that council passed that motion. And that's what allows us to levy the fines. So I don't think we need a mayor for that. We need a mayor for lots of things, don't get me wrong, but I don't think that's one of them. And I think we just keep these things in mind. My second thing is I think the answer to this might be obvious, but if there's going to be, if there's a second wave, it's po, is it possible that we would bring in another delegation of authority to the C A O? I think people would like to know that.
Mayor Patterson?
So I think that that's probably a question best addressed to me. So, so Counselor Hutchinson, I, I mean, it would be a motion that has to be passed by council, but yes, I could see a circumstance where if there was a a strong second wave and we had to to respond and to react circumstances similar to what we saw back in in March, then I could see that there could be a rationale and a reason why we want to to once again bring forward a motion. That would be up for council discussion. The council would have to pass, just as we did in the last time. I hope that that won't be required, but I think that that's something that we have to be prepared for. And the last thing that I'll just say is I just do note that Commissioner Joyce has his hand raised as well.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to answer Counselor Hutchinson's first question, just regarding the fines, just a point of clarification. So at this point, no orders have been set by the mayor in Kingston. So there are no fines that can be assessed under those orders, and that's what council passed a few months ago, was that the fines that can be assessed right now are all under provincial direction.
Okay, that's that's good to know. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Um, just on the point that Counselor Stroud brought up, the, I just wanted, I think people are assuming that this, you know, the closure of the walls, roads downtown is taking place. You might get the impression without controversy, but that, as he pointed out, is not true, and I've heard different opinions as well. You know, at first blush, you think, okay, this is probably good. But there are actually public health issues there. And I'm not sure if it can even be pulled off. And that has been expressed to me by a number of residents. I'm starting to get the pushback from businesses. So, because everybody doesn't benefit in the same way, to the same conditions, this is I think this is just factual, okay? Relates to any kind of big festival downtown, certain businesses see a drop-off in business. I think they're concerned about this happening in this case, too. So I just wanted to point out that this is something we should, you know, seriously consider when what is happening, as Counselor Straub pointed out, without public consultation and debate, we really don't know. I don't know. Okay, because I can't, it's hard to judge. I know there are the DBIA, and certainly some of their members are strongly in favor. But I know for a fact not all, okay? So, it puts the council's dad directly downtown in a bit of a spot, okay? So it raises the question, was the decision to do this a business decision or a public health decision? I don't see the public health argument. And that's what the delegation of authority was about. I don't want to, I'm not being negative about staff. They did, as far as I'm concerned, a really good job. But now we're talking about the issues that come up when decisions are made in a certain way. Then I feel it's my responsibility to, you know, make it as complex as it actually is, rather than the way we might like it to be. So, I'll just leave it at that. I'll follow Council Stroud on this. But I just want people to know, it's, it's much more, there's more controversy than my first meet the eye. Okay? Thank you.
Are there other questions? Oh, sorry, that's a point of order, Mayor Patterson?
Mayor, I appreciate your indulgence. I'm not, not trying to abuse my point of order privileges, but again, I'm just pointing out that CAO Hurdle has her hand raised to respond to Counselor Hutchinson's concerns.
Thank you. CAO Hurdle?
Thank you. And through you, Deputy Mayor. So there, there were questions from Counselor Hutchinson in terms of what was considered in the decision. And for a number of you, you might recall that this actually started quite some time ago through emails that we received from constituents asking if there was any way that the city could provide more space for pedestrians downtown as they were walking on Princess Street and concerned about the, the space or the lack of space in some of the streets downtown. So we, we did get a number of emails with, with those requests and questions. That's when we actually started to look at this concept of either closing or reducing lanes within the downtown. As we actually started to look into that, because we had been receiving these emails, and some of them from members of council, through members of council, from constituents, we also started to have conversations with businesses that were located, obviously, on those streets and look at how can, how could we do something that could maybe benefit both? One, the pedestrians having more space, cyclists having more space, as well as some businesses being able to have more outdoor space, knowing that with COVID-19, there are more space restrictions, obviously, with social distancing. So I do want to indicate that the only street that will be closed is Market Street. Princess Street will be reduced to one lane, and Brock Street will be reduced to one lane. So traffic is still going through, deliveries are still going to happen. All of those things are still going to take place. But with the reduced space, meaning the parking lay-by taking out, obviously, creating more space for people and businesses with the reduction to one lane. So that, that's where this actually all started. It started with the public asking for ways to create more space on some of the downtown streets.
Thank you.
Yes, through you, your chair. I'm just tweaked by some of the comments with regards to the emergency declaration. And this was one of the reasons why I had raised the concerns early on about having a timeline or a window similar to the province does every 21 days. But we don't have that restriction on an emergency that council will have to come and vote on whether to extend the emergency or not. And we've been really fortunate in Kingston through the diligence of our residents and our health staff and team to, to really work hard to keep our incidence of the Wuhan virus down. And, and because of that, and because Kingston has already, you know, lobbed the ideas of, you know, regional separation from the province to manage our own affairs, I think we should continue to be the leader and not wait for the province and remove our emergency declaration so the council can make the very difficult and comprehensive decisions that we're elected to do. So if there was someone to include additional emotion or whatever, I would support that tonight. Thank you.
Questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the, oh, sorry, I'm going to go back to Mayor Patterson for final comments. Sure.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate the, the debate and the discussion, the input around the table. There is no question that there is a trade-off. When we extended delegated authority to staff, it was for a reason. It was because we wanted to be able to take quick action, to be able to respond to the needs and the concerns that we were hearing. And I know that everyone around this table was getting emails from residents and from business owners on a whole range of different concerns. So we could have, we could have gone with the usual timeline. We could have consulted on a whole number of different decisions. All, many decisions that were very, very important, that impacted many, many people, whether it was the changes to Kingston Transit, whether it was the changes to parking or garbage collection. I just think of the number of things that, that had to be, to be addressed in the last three months. And it's true, we did have to put consultation aside. There is absolutely that trade-off. My take is that in the crisis phase, that that is the time where you do that, because the quick action, the quick response is more important. That's why I bring forward this motion now, because I believe that now we do need to shift back. I appreciate the concerns, certainly on the downtown street closures. There's, there's no doubt that there's been lots of details. It's very difficult to get 700 businesses all to agree. But we're, I, I will say this. There has been a staff team in the background that have been doing an enormous amount of work, individual consultations with businesses, trying to get those details right. And again, certainly, this was a response, as CAO Hurdle said, many people that came to my office wanting this additional street closure space for, for more space for pedestrians to feel comfortable of being able to walk downtown and still be able to physical distance. So it's one of those things where, you know, you, you do your best in that moment. But I think going forward, I'm certainly fine to have some shift back and have, have council deal with some of the, the many difficult decisions yet to come this year and into next year. And so I appreciate the, the feedback from council on that. Thank you.
And so with that, I will call the vote. So all those in favor? Opposed? And it carries. Thank you. And I will return the chair to you, Mayor Patterson.
That's great. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So we will now move to new motion number two, moved by Counsel Doherty, seconded by Counsel Kylie. Whereas daily physical activity and time spent outdoors are tremendously important for people's mental and physical well-being, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas sidewalks and trails are sometimes too narrow and cycle lanes too close to sidewalks for people to be able to maintain physical distance while walking or riding. Whereas pedestrianization initiatives are being rolled out in municipalities across Canada and the world in response to growing needs for outdoor space due to COVID-19 closures and economic disruption. Whereas urgently repurposing outdoor space is a critical strategy for preventing community spread of infectious disease in urban areas. Whereas Kingston Coalition for Active Transportation is well-positioned to take on a key collaborative role during these exceptional times, being well-versed in all official transportation planning documents, having been steadfastly engaged with councils, city staff, Queen's University researchers, and other community groups, and neighborhood associations over the past decade. Whereas the city is committed to the engagement of residents on matters that affect their quality of life and their city to facilitate more informed and inclusive municipal decision-making, as per the municipal, as per the public engagement framework approved by city council in October 2017. Therefore, be it resolved that the city modify the existing road closure process where possible to pilot a quiet street implementation through the installation of signage, temporary fixtures, and by limiting vehicles to local traffic only. And that the Kingston Coalition for Active Transportation be designated as the sole organization, that may bring quiet street applications forward under this process in 2020. And that the applications submitted for quiet streets demonstrate appropriate consultation with impacted residents and property owners to mitigate concerns related to access and safety. And that under this pilot process, KCAT, as the applicant, would be responsible for the quiet street implementation, including signage, fixtures, and insurance. And that road closure fees for such applications be waived for 2020. And that the Transportation Services Department be granted delegated authority to suspend, limit, or expand this pilot program, safety reviews, or resources permit through 2020. And that any quiet street implementation will be removed by November 13, 2020, or earlier, at the discretion of the Public Works Department to allow for maintenance and winter control. And that the Transportation Services Department report back on the safety and effectiveness of this program in Q2 2021, prior to reintroducing or extending the pilot program. Counsel Doherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm really happy to speak on this motion. About 10 minutes ago, my computer crashed. My internet crashed, and I thought I missed the whole thing altogether. So I'm very happy to, to be able to speak to the motion that is in front of us at the moment, the Quiet Street motion. So the delegation we heard earlier this evening spoke really well to what the Quiet Street project is actually all about. This would be a pilot project, a collaborative, community-based project between the Kingston Coalition of Active Transportation and our city. It is a creative project that has the potential of increasing safe walking paths for residents. The fact is that many of our sidewalks just are not wide enough for social distancing. When people's paths cross, somebody is often forced onto the road. So during this pilot, KCAT will be working with residents, and they will submit some streets for partial closures to create quiet streets. We've never done anything like this before. And it is so wonderful that we have in our community a group that's so dedicated and knowledgeable when it comes to active transportation. I'm excited about this collaborative pilot project, and I hope that everyone tonight will support KCAT and this motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the motion? Yes, Counsel Neil?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the intent of this, and I was somewhat reassured when the delegation, who clearly are going to be engaged in this, spoke about maintaining and making sure that there was community engagement in the decisions. I have a couple of questions. I know, first of all, the idea that Bike Boulevards limit traffic isn't actually accurate. Bike Boulevards, for instance, reduce speeds on a bike boulevard. Is it our intent? And I'll ask staff this question. Do you foresee us lowering the speed limit? Because without signage, 50 kilometers an hour is the allowable speed. What Bike Boulevards do is they put up signage that says, please yield to bikes, and they reduce the traffic. Are we considering those steps for the quiet streets?
Mr. Simple?
Yes, through you, your worship. So, with respect to the speed limit on the segments or, or streets that KCAT proposed, the, the speed limit that's, that's in effect, or that's, that's in effect under the bylaw would remain. However, in these types of implementations, there is often signage or advisory signage added, similar to what you're speaking to, Counsel Mayor, Neil, that asks for vehicles and, one, asks vehicles to respect local traffic only, and indicates that it's a quiet street, that it's intended for all users, and to be mindful of those users they may see, and, and can advise a speed reduction. The, the official speed limit, though, would sort of remain with what is installed on that street.
I, I guess I find that a little bit frustrating because cab drivers, pizza delivery drivers, all have shortened routes. And if they're still allowed to drive at the regular speed, they'll do so. And so that's, that's a safety concern that I would, I would have. The, so, so if we can at least have a consideration for lowered speeds on those stretches of quiet streets, because otherwise, I think we may unintentionally be endangering some people who feel that they have been told that they have, it's a safer street, but will still have some cowboy drivers, some taxi drivers, some pizza delivery people, who will be trying to get to their destination fairly quickly. The other thing I just want to, and I, and I shared Counselor Strauss' kind of concern about, about the idea of delegated authority. And I did share with the mover and the seconder and the mayor earlier in the week a concern about about this delegated authority possibly leaving the community or leaving council somewhat out of the loop, which has happened with delegated authority in the past. But I was somewhat reassured by the delegation that there will be full consultation with the community. So I appreciate that. I think the best way that I could avoid bringing forward a, an amendment to add that would be to get some assurance from the mayor and staff that indeed if there's a proposal for a quiet street in my district or in Counselor Strauss's district, that we will be informed of that happening. And we won't be faced with a call from media saying, what do you think of this? And saying, well, I'm not sure. I'll have to get back to you. So I would really appreciate that kind of assurance from staff and the mayor and the mover and the seconder. And I guess that's in the form of a question.
Mr. Simple?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. To your question, Counselor Neil, as it relates to being informed about the implementation of, of a quiet street, this would be part of our existing road closure and lane closure process, which includes sort of communicating out that application to a variety of stakeholders, including stakeholders that have asked to be sort of included on any of those circulations. So I think as part of this process, as part of the existing lane closure, road closure process, it, it could certainly include circulation to, to the councillors in that information that this application is being considered and, you know, it is, and is looking to be implemented.
And I presume that that would be at the initial stage, that these two blocks of Front, Front and Ex Street are being considered for a quiet street application. And it wouldn't just be at the end of the process to say, these are the two streets. Is that? Am I being presumptuous?
Mr. Simple?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the, as the road closure and lane closure process exists right now, it, it is, it is typically sort of at the information stage when the, when the implementation is happening. I think the, the organization that, that would be bringing the application forward I think the the organization that would be bringing the application forward, so in this case, KCAT, they have committed to consulting with the residences, the residents, the neighborhoods, neighborhood associations. And I presume that they would also be consulting with the local councillors. Certainly, I can take that back to them when they, if they bring an application forward as part of this process.
I'm sure they're hearing this right now, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, next is councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I support the motion. I think the any sort of concerns about implementation, et cetera, given that it's a pilot, which I don't always support pilot. Well, in theory, the concept of a pilot is just always, it's a bit of a, seems not always a fulsome enough step forward. But in this case, there are so many uncertainties with the future of transportation and the situation that we're in, that I think it makes a lot of sense. It's very practical. But also, a really important point on that is that, as was mentioned, I think by one of the delegations, this is work that they're contributing to as an organization, and they're prepared to do so as a group of volunteers. So I would just be resistant to anything that would add extra burden or pressure to KCAT. To, you know, I mean, I think they'll all learn as we see this project roll out, and hopefully we'll continue to share our views and the feedback that we receive with KCAT and with our city staff so that we can work towards those improvements. But rather than overcomplicated it, overcomplicated it at the outset, I would just like, I would like to, you know, give thanks to the organization that is taking this on, quite a lot of the work involved and are prepared to do so to address what is really a very timely concern for a lot of residents in the city, which is that, you know, trying to balance their desire, their desire for more outdoor activity and active transportation with maybe some reluctance to go out and try cycling with their family members on a, on the street that is not one that they're familiar traveling on. So I really am appreciative of the work that's gone into this so far, and I'll be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. I support this motion. I actually had residents approach me last week on One Street that when they heard of this program, they want to be considered for it. So there's great enthusiasm from One Street in my district to be part of this pilot project. A question to Mr. Simple. It's, so the motion reads that the road closure fee would be waived for 2020. How much is that fee normally? And then if this pilot project goes ahead for next year, would that fee be paid for from the residents on the street? Or would it be KCAT paying the fee, like through public funding that KCAT gets? How does that work?
Simple.
Through you, your worship. My councillor Ossanik, I don't have the 2020 fee schedule open right now. I will look for it, and I can send that information. There are a variety of fees associated with a road or lane closure. The application fee and the, there's fees that are associated with staff review time, sort of back and forth, design reviews and such. Those are all in place as it relates in most cases to large construction projects, projects where there's a major impact on the transportation network or major work going on within the transportation network. Those, based on a, on sort of staff understanding of the program that's been proposed by KCAT, we expect that that time should be minimal. The implementation that they're proposing, the examples that they have provided, I would expect that the impact on staff time and those associated fees would be quite minimal. Moving forward, I think that that sort of review of how those fees could be covered in the future can be part of the report that's brought back next year about how this, about how this arrangement and implementation functioned. But this type of work is consistent with the Active Transportation Master Plan and programs that were approved as part of the implementation plan. So I think it can be reviewed under that as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you councillor Doherty, councillor Kylie, for putting the work in consultation with KCAT to have this motion written. It's a very well-written motion, my compliments. There's compliments in it that I wanted to clarify before we vote. In general, I agree with my colleagues that have spoken so far in favor. So there's a couple, and I alluded to one at the beginning. So when I was asking the delegates, so the thing about the winter control. So first of all, is it my understanding from listening to everything that's been said, not only will the barriers that are used for quiet streets will be removed by November 2020, so that winter control can happen, but it's also the end of the pilot. Is that correct?
Mr. Stroud.
Through you, your worship. Yes, I guess for all intensive purposes, that be, at that time, once those components were removed, it would end the, end the implementation for 2020.
Okay, so on that clause, that clause seven, because there are year-round users of active transportation, as we all know, and how, and those people are perhaps, if I did wondering why that clause is there, if it's also the end of the pilot and it makes sense to coincide the end of the pilot with the beginning of the winter season, I can see actually the rationale for it now. So I won't be asking to separate that clause to vote against it. I was going to up until the beginning of this debate. The other question I had, well, actually, before we leave that, I do have another question about that winter. So we have those ballards on Brock and Johnson, for example. We've already heard tonight how those get removed in November, December for the winter control. So I also know that other cities don't do it that way, and that other cities have permanent fixtures for bike lanes that don't get removed. So I'm wondering, in the Active Transportation Master Plan, it doesn't explicitly say. I assume that we could go either way. Is that correct? We could have permanent separating physical features in our right-of-ways, right-of-way, that wouldn't be removed for winter control. They would just require us to have specialized equipment, small enough sidewalk piles, for example, to separately clear the bike lanes from the roadways. Is that correct?
Mr. Simple.
Yes, through your worship. Yes, in the, so the Active Transportation Master Plan speaks to, speaks to both building the infrastructure that the city would build for active transportation, but also that the city would look at operating and maintaining it, including the necessary means to do that year-round. So it's, but I think it also, the plan also sort of recommends that we are in some early stages of that. So what the city has implemented to date is identifying a winter cycling network. And the maintenance efforts across that network were enhanced over the last season. And we would sort of review that and then develop other pieces from that. So there are no concrete plans at this time to provide a network of on-street ballers that would be in place year-round. But that is certainly something that can be considered in the future.
Yeah, so that's funny, that little joke you made there, Mr. Simple. No concrete plans for concrete on roadways. That was funny. Okay, so that's the winter control side. And then there's the consultation that councillor Neil said. And also what councillor Holland said about half-measures or pilots, not, you know, not being a standard step or whatever. On the consultation, I am confident that KCAT will consult with councillors and residents because they've already done so. In fact, two of the speakers tonight consulted with me in the past about this. And I've heard that they consulted with other residents in my district as well. So that is an ongoing MO of the KCAT, and I'm happy to see them involved. I would say that councillor Neil's concerns would be founded if we weren't sure that the proponent coming forward to volunteer to do this work was impacted, did not in fact have a track record of full public consultation, as KCAT does. So I'm satisfied with that aspect. So in general, this is, as councillor Holland said, sort of a, sort of a, it's a pilot. It doesn't close the street completely. There's no speed limit. There's no physical immovable barriers. There's temporary barriers. Like, it's all very temporary and very, not tentative, but it's a step in the right direction. But it's not, it's not going all the way to helping the PPA, the users of active transportation. But it's the start of the conversation, the start of an attempt in the right direction. And you gotta, you gotta start somewhere. And, you know, the step might be small, but if it's in the right direction, you can see another step coming in the future. So I will support this motion and try to contain my enthusiasm as a cyclist and as a parent of three young children that are constantly out in the roadway on their scooters and running around and racing each other and living in a downtown area. It can be nerve-wracking at times. So this quiet street thing, like councillor Ossanik said, there's going to be streets in Sydney that I'm definitely going forward with. And I hope that KCAT can accommodate that.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds, councillor Stroud.
And I will, and I volunteer to be a resource at any time if anyone wants to involve me in this. And it's very exciting. Thank you, councillors.
Okay, thank you. Next, I don't have anybody else on my list. Councillor Doherty, or is there any final comments?
Yes, thanks. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to thank my fellow councillors for your positive response and for your well-thought-out questions. I think you raised a few comments that certainly KCAT will be listening to. But like you said, councillor Stroud, they do, KCAT does have, their habit is to talk to everybody. Their approach is a collaborative way, so there's no doubt that they will be reaching out to the district councillors. But it is also important to thank KCAT and recognize that the amount of work that they're going to take on when we approve this motion. KCAT is committed to this, and they are going to need a lot of volunteers to make this a success. And our entire community and city, including staff and transportation staff, will benefit from this because this pilot project is an opportunity to learn a lot. And we have the community initiating this. So this is a really exciting collaborative effort between the community and the city. So I'm really grateful for KCAT.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will call the vote on new motion number two. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. We'll now move to new motion number three on the addits. Again, I'm going to ask if Deputy Mayor Hill will take the chair for this one.
Thank you, and Mayor Patterson. So this is new motion number three, as Mayor Patterson indicated as part of your addendum. So moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Chappell. Whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities has established a grant opportunity through the municipal asset management program. And whereas the City of Kingston plans to apply for eligible project costs totaling $100,000, and the City of Kingston is eligible to receive up to a maximum of $50,000 in grant contributions toward the total eligible project cost. And whereas a council, a resolution of councils required as part of the grant application process, committing to the municipality's portion of total eligible project cost, therefore be resolved that city council directs staff to apply for a grant opportunity from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program for asset management assessments at various locations. And that the City of Kingston commits to conducting the following activities. It is proposed project submitted to the Canadian, or to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program to advance our energy and asset management program developed to meet council's priority to develop, to demonstrate leadership on climate action. Number one, asset condition assessments at various municipal facilities. Number two, condition assessment and capital planning for building energy systems. And number three, long-term financial modeling to support asset management decisions. And the City of Kingston has allocated $50,000 from approved capital budget envelopes toward the cost of this initiative. Mayor Patterson?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I think the motion is self-explanatory. This is a grant opportunity for the City of Kingston, where essentially, as council, must spell out the terms and also that we agree to cover our share if FCM gives us the remaining grant money. So I think I'll leave it at there.
Are there any questions? Councillor Hutchinson.
My question is, does staff have a, I hate to use the word concrete, since that's an object of fun in this meeting already. But, you know, the principals are down there, and I know what they're talking about. But do they have any particular type of application that we might see if we get this grant?
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you. So this would be based on projects that we have actually already identified in our plans. In terms of the list itself, councillor Ossanik, I'd have to get back to you, and we could send an email to councillor, council with more details.
Okay, fair enough. This is what, I just thought it helps the public and the councillors that they know of some better idea with actually how this would apply. But that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any final comments, Mayor Patterson? Without, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried, and I return the chair.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to motion number four. Kylie, seconded by councillor Neil. Where the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMo, is seeking nominations to their board of directors for 2020 to 2022, and nominations supposed to be received by June 22, 2020. Whereas AMo is looking to have more mayoral representation from Eastern Ontario on their board of directors. Whereas nominations to the AMo board must be supported by a council motion which indicates the financial support of that council. Whereas the City of Kingston has benefited from having local representation on this board through Mayor Patterson over the last year. Whereas given the current amount of change at the provincial level with legislation and policy implementation, it is critical for the city to be connected to the province through this important municipal association. Therefore, be resolved, the council of the City of Kingston nominates Mayor Patterson for reelection to the board with the Association of the Municipalities of Ontario as a member of the larger provincial caucus. And the City of Kingston agrees to cover the travel expenses related to attending meetings. Councillor Kylie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. I thought, if you don't mind, I would ask you a few questions about your work in AMo because the second-last whereas clause references that you've been on the board before. And hoping you could tell us a bit about the work that you've done with them so far and the work that you hope to continue to do and why you're seeking reelection.
Absolutely, councillor Kylie. So I think that there are, there are essentially two real advantages to having a representative from this council on the AMo board. So number one is to be able to take Kingston-specific concerns and ideas and directions to the AMo board and ensure that they're included within the discussions that are happening with the provincial government. So for example, over the last year, there's been discussion on, remember, Bill 108? So everything from changes to the L-PAT, changes to community benefits, community benefit charges. There was a lot of stuff under that planning environment where we had very specific views as a council and as a community and as a city. And so it gave me an opportunity to be able to make sure that there was a real platform and that those views were included in those discussions with ministers. and that those views were included in those discussions with ministers. The second piece, I think that I would highlight would be the discussions around a reform of public health. Remember, of course, that the province had initiated a consultation to very much change what public health would look like. Again, Kingston had a very specific ask and idea about exactly what we wanted in terms of public health representation. Again, having that chance to be able to communicate that directly, not only to the rest of the board, but then ensure that that was passed on to the province. So I think that the, the first advantage is, is myself being able to take what I hear from this table and direct it to AMO. The other advantage is the other way around. For me, being able to sit around the AMO board means that I can get information and insight and detail faster than we would otherwise maybe get through an AMO update. There's, there's nuance in information that, that I'm able to translate back. And so that effectively is, I, I think, where the advantages lie. And so being able to, to make those connections, being able to build quick allies because on a lot of the issues and concerns that we have, and I think particularly with respect to the challenges with COVID-19, many of the challenges that we're grappling with are shared by many other communities across the province. So being able to compare notes with them, being able to quickly form alliances so that we can push the province. Right now, the top of the agenda is pushing for additional funding for municipalities because, of course, we know that we have to run a balanced budget and we need help from the province. So that's, that's one of the, the big things that we're pushing on for right now. And I have a board meeting to discuss that on Friday. So I think councillor Kylie, that's probably the best way that I think I can respond to those. I, I do think that there's a real advantage to Kingston if, if I can continue to retain that representation on the board.
Okay, and I do want to pick up on something you've, and something that's referenced in the motion about the need for Eastern Ontario mayors specifically. As I understand it, you're the chair of the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus. How does that relate to what's happening with AMO and where's the connection between the two?
Sure. So the AMO board has, has mainly councillors. There are a few mayors from across the province. And they bring very different perspectives and sometimes different priorities to the table. So now it's, it's a collaborative board, but I think recognising that, for example, what's best for Eastern Ontario tends to be sometimes different from what's best for the GTA. So being able to have the Eastern Ontario perspective is key. And then being the chair of the Eastern Ontario Mayor's Caucus means that I'm in regular communication with mayor of Peterborough, mayor of Belleville, Brockville, Cornwall, Smith Falls, for example. And so what enables us, that enables me to do is first be able to get consensus on issues and priorities of the major urban centres in, in Eastern Ontario and then take that directly to the AMO board. Then because I also sit on the, 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 the organisation of mayors, of the big city mayors in Ontario, being able to also do the same thing and create that alignment as well. So this is all really about how do we push priorities for cities like Kingston? Whether, sometimes we identify more with the larger cities in Ontario. Sometimes we identify more with the cities within our region. But being able to play both of those to be able to put forward our priorities. Because I think in this environment, if Kingston goes alone, our, our impact is, is limited. If, not to say it's not zero and we've, we've got good discussions and there are times where sometimes we do need to go alone, but there's lots of cases where we can quickly be more effective if we can build alliances and all that enables me to do that.
Great, excellent. So obviously, I'm supporting the motion as the mover. I think for the reasons that we've heard about the strength in a regional approach, we've seen that through the situation most recently with COVID, but also earlier last year around some of our climate change efforts. I think that having mayor Patterson's respectful and constructive voice at that table is beneficial both ways, as he said. So I hope we can unanimously support this motion.
Thank you very much and thank you for the kind words, councillor Kylie. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote on new motion number four. All those in favour? Opposed? And that carries. Okay, we have no other new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by councillor Chappell, seconded by councillor Bohm. Minutes of city council meeting number 2020-18, held Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, be confirmed.
All those in favour? Opposed? And that carries. Okay, we have some, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Yes, councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. This shouldn't take long. I just wanted to put it out there to you guys because I, you know, I haven't seen any of you in three months. In person than me. And now we're phase two. Are we thinking about when we might move logically maybe to the memorial hall, physical distancing type council setup with a huge room and everybody two or three metres apart or whatever? Are we thinking of getting back to in-person council, council meetings anytime soon? Or is it going to be Zoom, Zoom, Zoom for the rest of 2020? That is, it's a question, but it doesn't really have an answer. I'm just sort of putting it out there that at the hospital, what we're, what we're doing, and by the way, it's super busy at the hospital. But what we're doing is everybody's wearing masks when they're within two metres of each other, which is pretty much all the time in all patient care areas. That started on Monday yesterday. And that coincides with the phase two reopening of all the community things. So I'm just wondering if we're doing the same thing as an institution and thinking how we're going to transition back to more normal activities at city hall and, and what safety measures we need to improve on. I don't know if any staff ever wanted, wanted to address this tonight. I just wanted to put it out there.
Mr. Joyce, I see your hands up if you wanted to respond.
Thank you and through you. So we are keeping an eye on this and watching. Right now, the limitation is still 10. Private meetings, you can go above the 10 with physical distancing, but public meetings, you're still unable to go beyond the, the number of 10. But we, but we are going to be continuing to keep an eye on this.
Open that, Mr. Clerk. I'll ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Osterhoff. That bylaws one through four and seven be given their first and second readings.
All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried.
Moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Osterhoff. That clause 11.36 of bylaw number 2020, 2010-1 is amended. Be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw two, three readings.
All those in favour? Opposed? That's carried.
By councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Osterhoff. That bylaws one through seven be given their third reading.
All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. A motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor Hutchinson. All those in favour? Opposed? And we are adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Have a good night.